Yeah, yeah.
Got your clothes?
Get your hat.
Where's Ben?
We'll take him back down to the...
That's four seats. Jenny's four. Yeah, Brian has two. Yes, that's strong.
Yeah, it is.
I got ten seconds. You made three, two. If I could have your attention, we're gonna call the public hearing to order for amending the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. Is there anyone here that needs to address counsel on the amending of the fiscal year budget? Anybody? All right, we'll close that public hearing. And just to remind everyone, this meeting is being recorded, so what you talk about is probably being recorded, so... Don't mean you can't talk, just don't... They want them to say about...
Really check some up.
That's right. That's right. We'll start, we'll start back at six thirty. Call me during six thirty.
Bella, can you take notes from way in the back? Do you need to come up front?
No.
You sure? Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is he done at for school?
You can come up here beside me.
I want to be there. Yeah. Yeah. Big guy, she's good. Did you find? Can they run, bro?
Miss Brown's class.
Just lay it over there?
Bella, I can sign it after you get in. After the meeting, I'll sign it.
April, no help, you can't see anything.
I'll do this.
Thank you.
How are you? Um, no, but I know that's too dangerous.
Anybody needs to sign in, this is the present counsel, please sign in on the sign in sheet.
But that's...
Yeah, we got you, baby.
And it's only took us... Sorry, I'll wake up. I'm waking up Ryan. Yeah, I'm there. Then we'll, uh... Sorry. We have meetings next two days. What is their thing in your world? Is it?
Bunch of numbers.
Oh, bunch of numbers. I've got several numbers I can give you too, if you want. If you just want all the numbers?
Well...
Add them, add them all up to one big number. She probably really had it that way. Yes, full big number. All right, this is a number.
Danny Billings is the one who started that.
Yeah, I mean, the deal is...
I know where everybody is.
You would know where everybody is. How about me?
I noticed.
He's got his kid. She told him. It took the grand slam, though. Yeah. Tell me about that, tell them about the game. He loved it. He loved it. There's a good reason why he turned it down. Double A for a while. Well, they said that, look, if they're minister and magistrate, they play in federal courts, they should make more money, give them a little bit of bonus. You know, they don't have the same money out there. Even trouble.
All right, if I could have your attention, we will call the Loudoun City Council meeting for February twenty-first to order. Well, February twenty-fourth, sorry. So first, order of business, I'm gonna let Mimi introduce our special guest that's gonna lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, so Mimi, will you introduce your grandchildren to us?
I do have a few grandchildren here this evening. We have Cadet Josephine Hufaker, a junior, Genevieve Hufaker, and Daisy Matilda Hufaker. And they plan on leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They are here from overseas. They are in a Girl Scout troop, they are part of the Girl Scout troop over in Bahrain. Their father is stationed over there, so they live in Bahrain at this time. And they are part of troop nineteen oh one, so you guys will...
They get the award for father's travel. I'll lead us in the invocation, and then our special guest will lead us in the pledge. So if everyone can stand for it, let's pray together, and then girls, you can lead us in the pledge. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of a beautiful day you blessed us with today. We thank you for the many, many blessings you just so rich could pour out upon us. Thank for health and strength, and just been able to serve our community and serve you. Pray that God, you would lead, guide, and direct us through this meeting. Pray that we would discuss things and be according to your will. Pray that we do things that would honor you. God, I pray that you lead, guide, and direct us. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Good, yes. She knows better than I do.
Attention, so please.
I bring the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mimi. See, the girls can join me right here in the front.
You got it, Melissa. Jamie, go ahead and bring him up to you.
Why, yeah? There you go, sweetheart. Here's your flag.
Genevieve and Matilda.
Matilda, there you go.
I actually have...
Better get another one.
I know, I'm getting there. There we go. Jamie, did you get a good picture?
Put that way. All right. Thank you, let's get to my... We've been trying for a while to catch them when they was here, so luckily we were able to do that, it lined up perfect, so...
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Riddings.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison, and I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and to see how their government operates. We appreciate you taking time for your own personal schedules to be here to see how our city government works. It's my intentions as your chair that we create a space where everyone feels seen, heard, respected, and valued. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you do not have one, you can pick one up on the table at the back of the room. This agenda is your guide to what we'll be talking about tonight. In order to conduct efficient business like meetings, the council has adopted some specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to a place on the agenda that's entitled citizens' input, where anyone who has signed in is encouraged to speak to counsel. We do ask, however, that you wait until you've been recognized before you speak. After being recognized, we ask that you approach the podium and follow three simple rules. At the beginning of the presentation, please state your name for the records, address all your questions to the chair, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once the citizens' input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You're welcome to stand and observe the meeting, but be advised that any additional public comments will be limited to three minutes and at the discretion of counsel. We ask everyone, remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight. It's a very important responsibility for all of us. You can help us do this business by observing the rules we've established. Again, thank you for coming to the meeting, we're glad you're here tonight. Recognition of visitors, we have some employees to recognize, and Director Brubaker, you started or you hired two of the best ones on your, I think these are your first two hires, and you, you started off really well, so it's my pleasure to recognize our two employees, Travis Gray for twenty years and Bill Jean for twenty years fire department. We're gonna come through. This was Travis Gray, presented Travis Gray from Fire Department, appreciation of twenty years of service to the city of Loudoun. Travis, appreciate you saying it. President Phil Jean, Fire Department, appreciation of twenty years of service to the city of Loudoun. Thank y'all, I'm saying that one. Good.
Fourteen minutes, my senior. I just want the cheat token.
Fourteen minutes.
Fourteen minutes.
We got a couple.
All right, thank you for your service. Thank you, appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
My glasses now. I got them.
Okay.
Just too many pockets, too. All right, next, we're gonna ask for the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a copy of it?
Some make a motion. We have a...
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to adopt the agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, citizens' input, Mitch Miller? Come and tell us what's on your mind. That microphone's not on, but I don't think you need it, Mitch.
I don't.
You don't need it.
I'm pretty loud without it. I have two, uh, two issues to cover. The first being, I, about the resolution in section J, I want the center seventy-five property. I wanna thank Mr. Riddings for tabling that issue until we could get a presentation, and the rest of the council for supporting that. I also went in front of the utility board tonight and thanked them for that presentation made by Travis and Aubrey in coming to talk to the council. I'd like to, to ask the council members to support the sale of that property with a couple of minor points of input that you could give back to L U B. One is that they choose the site that's an alternate, that's five hundred feet off the road. There's a bunch of numbers and letters and confusion about what the numbers were, but five hundred feet off the road would be a good thing. That's the first thing, I believe, of course, I, Travis is gonna talk to that, so I, I would support that location back off the road a bit there. The other point that I would like to introduce as just input is to develop or advise or come up a communication plan for the residents that will be impacted by line construction along Queen Road in that community. So I think it would be useful, and I know it's some time away, and I think it's playing a time to communicate and explain exactly what that line construction would look like. And in every version of the substation, no matter where it went, it always meant coming down Queen Road. But a double sixty-nine line, I think we owe it to the community there to explain what that's gonna look like. And, and that's the two points that I would ask that you give feedback. Other than that, I would ask council to support that, acknowledging that Mr. Cardinals, not all of Mr. Cardinals' questions may have been answered, but I got enough answered that I, I support it, and I've did a video of supporting it on Facebook, there was fifteen thousand one hundred and four views. It reached eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two individuals, and twelve hundred and fifty-nine people clicked on the link. So I think I told the community I supported it. And the second issue, addressed directly to Mr. Harris as chair, I didn't appreciate the way I was addressed in the workshop. I don't think there was probably any intent there, but it was, the tone was a little off, and I come here and I speak and I try to do the right thing always, and I'm not an enemy, and I do acknowledge that I did get enough questions answered to come around to supporting this, but I just wanna be clear that I would rather ask the questions in an open meeting here than asking them through other means. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, thank you, Mitch. We have Glenn, Purcell, and David speak a little, but I think we'll, they're just here to answer questions if they need to. There's nothing you need to address. Okay. All right. Attorney Fry could not be here due to medical concern or condition in his family, so he did look at the minutes, so they, they approved accurate to him, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-seven. Okay? Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, next thing is, I've asked to be, I've asked this to be put on the agenda. March third through the seventh, it's National School Breakfast Week, and I've helped with this at different, at the cafeterias in different, different times when they celebrate this every year. Focus is on getting kids to eat breakfast in school. It's proven statistically that kids do better when they have breakfast, they pay more attention, they're, they're less disruptive, and they do, they do better in school. In Tennessee, last year, number of students that enrolled in free reduced lunch is six hundred and five thousand, and only two hundred and eighty-seven thousand eat breakfast of that number. So there's about three hundred and twenty thousand that do not eat a breakfast. So it's National School Breakfast Week, third through the seventh, and Ms. Allison May is here, she's the Director of Food Services for Loudoun County Schools. So I have a proclamation declaring March third through the seventh as National School Breakfast Week for just to bring awareness to it. I'm gonna be go busy in those schools that week as well, helping the cafeteria folks with, so just, just remember that week, try to encourage people to focus on and, and get kids to eat in school, eat breakfast at school, as, as I'm sure Councilmember Riddings can attest from being at the school resource office, it's really, and there might be some, some kids might be stigmatized by it, they don't, you know, want to, some may not get there in time because of the bus route, so there's, there's several factors, but I think Allison told me they, you serve what, two hundred thousand?
Typically, school year, we'll serve about two hundred thousand school breakfasts to students. And a school breakfast costs a dollar thirty-five for a full pay student, so it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
And thirty cents for a student who's getting a reduced salary.
Okay. So the need's there, it's just to bring awareness to it, so I've got a proclamation I've written, I'm gonna ask Allison to come up here, and I'm gonna read the proclamation, and I'll let her take it to the school. Proclamation for National School Breakfast Week, March third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, where as the school breakfast program firmly established in nineteen seventy-five provides nutritional balanced breakfasts to more than fifteen million children across ninety-one thousand schools and institutions in the United States each day. Whereas the school breakfast program meets the nutritional needs of children, improves food security, promotes health, learning, and development by providing nutritional balanced breakfasts to schoolchildren each day. And whereas eighteen percent of children in Tennessee are food insecure and face hunger, and whereas school-aged children who experience hunger are more likely to be absent from school, visit the school nurse, and experience more challenges than children with a nutritious diet. Skipping breakfast has consistently been linked with worse academic and health outcomes for children. And whereas eating breakfast improves children's overall diets, builds healthy lifelong eating habits, and enhances their ability to learn and perform academically. And whereas making breakfast a part of the school day, commonly known as breakfast after the bell, and offering breakfast at no cost are effective ways to ensure more students realize the benefits of breakfast. And whereas expanding access to no-cost breakfast for all students through healthy school meals for all and participation in the federal community eligibility provision for eligible schools increases school breakfast, participation in food insecurity, improves academic outcomes, saves families' time and money, and reduces stigma and administrative costs. And whereas fifty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two breakfast meals were served in Tennessee in twenty twenty-four, reaching three hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-three students. And whereas parents, caregivers, teachers, and school food personnel all play an essential role to ensure the children of Loudoun have the basic resources needed to grow, learn, discover their own potential, and live happily fulfilling lives. And whereas No Kid Hungry offers information, tools, resources, and grants to support schools in implementing and expanding school breakfast programs, and the School Nutrition Association offers free materials to help schools commemorate National School Breakfast Week, including artwork to decorate their meal serving areas, toolkits and handouts, sample menu items, marketing materials, and suggested promotional activities, including games, activities, and contests. Whereas Loudoun City Council is committed to helping expand access to and enhance current school breakfast programs to ensure that our children have the means to succeed. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Loudoun does hereby proclaim March third through the seventh, twenty twenty-five, as School Breakfast Week, we encourage all residents of Loudoun to recognize and commemorate school administrators, school nutrition directors, and cafeteria staff who operate school breakfast programs that ensure the health, safety, and success of our children. Signed by Mayor Jeff Harris, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you for your work. All right, thank you. All right, now, resolutions. First resolution is authorizing the sale of certain properties in Center Center by Business Project. It's a pleasure of counsel.
I'm like, shall we sell the property?
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions?
Just quick, the five oh four, is it five hundred and four thousand, three hundred dollars is the purchase price?
The purchase price, yeah.
We get forty percent of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Director Williams and Manager Goins in the presentation they brought us and the information they gave us, and listening to our input and reconsidering the original location to go to that twelve B, twelve B spot. Appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir.
Before we actually vote on Travis to give an update on the core samples, Travis, you wanna do that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. So we move forward with the soil sample on twelve B. John, I got my number right in this meeting.
Okay.
And so, we were eleven, twelve, seven, six. Everything's good. There has been some field on that property in the patch, up on the top, the back. It's a little shelly, so what we're gonna have to do is go in and cut part of that out. And we're not going to lose that, and I got trouble buying with engineer buddies. I said dirt, from piney, soil on the front property, which is gonna help us to go in when we're done that clearing for the test of twelve A, to go in, we'll use all the dirt we pull from twelve B, if y'all approve that, and that's gonna help us bring that up some, plus clear all that up. It's good topsoil, it's just not good to build a, a substation on. We will have to bring some more dirt in. We looked at, early on, at site six, which is the property next to Agro, what we called it, and across from Purdy Brothers, that the city and county still currently own. We'll be able to pull some of that dirt, it's good enough to collect soil, sorry, some of that soil to pull, and that's gonna help that site be more valuable to get it pad ready, to hopefully increase the value of that property moving forward to select. But everything coming good, we got a little bit of limestone on the, the west end that we discussed with L U B board that we may have to do, you know, a rock clause in our contract. We'll work through that when we send it out to bid, but all the, all the soil samples and everything tested good, so...
Any questions for Travis before we go? I want to be able to, you know, share that, because that was also a question about that site pushing it back, you know, so that...
No caverns, really? No, sir.
So with this, you'll be able to do the five hundred feet back?
Yes, sir.
Like proposed?
Yes, sir. We, we have the same scenario on A and B. It was gonna be, we're going to build up A even more, you know, because it was lower, so, but this is gonna allow us to hopefully take care of everybody's needs with building that up some for the future, plus green space for now, and cutting and, and using twelve A, twelve B, and six.
Yeah.
All in conjunction to better the industrial park as a whole.
And that makes six A a lot better size, too.
Thanks for input.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Any questions for, for Lord Onit? Okay. All in favor of the, the motion to sell the property in Center Center five to Loudoun Utilities, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Four one. Motion carries. All right. Next one is Resolution of City Loudoun, Tennessee requesting passing of Private Act Charter Amendment. This was discussed a little bit at workshop, I think, but we didn't have all the information, really. We haven't been in contact with our legislatures, and I think we've got everything kind of written down here, this is not, this is, we gotta get this passed, it's gotta pass by two-thirds vote, city council, then goes to Tennessee General Assembly, signed by the governor, once it's signed, it comes back to city council. We must adopt the Private Act Resolution by two-thirds vote. This amendment doesn't establish a fee schedule or implement impact fees, but we need to get it in our charter so that we're able to do that in the future. So it, it's a lengthy process to, to get the charter changed, but we, we need to start with this, with this assembly that's getting ready to, and it's not too late at this point.
Right.
Okay, have a motion?
Aye.
Have a motion, second. Any questions? I mean, Melissa or myself can hopefully answer them if there is one. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, authorizing agreement with the Spiegler Group, and this is a monthly fee that we split fifty-fifty for Loudoun Utilities, and gentlemen are here, David, you know... Thank y'all for being here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm here to, to answer any questions that you may have about the proposal.
You've seen the proposal in the, in the packet, or statin', I think, of businesses that are gonna be looking at software?
If, if you don't mind, just for the, the audience here, sort of the same that you did for L U B about sort of the timeline and what it is that you, that this project entails? Absolutely. So the idea is that we, there's a need to have a software update for, was commonly referred to as C I S, Customer Information System, to be able to handle all the billing, all of the, the general ledger, integrating systems together. There are a lot of different vendors that are available for that kind of software packages. Some have different kinds of capabilities, some have better capabilities to integrate into existing systems. So the idea is to be able to identify what's the appropriate set of software, a software platform that, that really fits the needs of the city of Loudoun. And so that is the, the goal is to identify that. So what we've done is identified a four-phase approach. The first phase would be looking at all the system requirements. I, I made the comment earlier at the Utilities Council meeting a couple of hours ago that there's sort of the carpenters monitor of measured twice, cut once. And so before we just go out and buy software, because sometimes that leads to a, a result that's, that's not optimal, and you wind up getting something that doesn't really fit, the goal is to identify what is the right fit here. So we would develop requirements, identify specifically what are the needs, what are the integrations with the existing software, what is working, what's not working, and identify that. identify that. Then what we would do is from that information, we would take a lot of that content, put it into a bid document, and go into the procurement phase. So there, we would put together an R F P, we would publish it, send it out to all the different solution providers that are out on the market, we would advertise it, have a pre-bid meeting to be able to have the vendors hear from us in terms of what we're looking for, what our, our needs are. We would have a Q and A period during the bid process, then we would close the Q and A period, we would wait for the bids to come in, once we got them, we would score them, evaluate them from an economic perspective, how much they cost, the system capabilities, we develop a shortlist. Those firms that are shortlisted would come in, be invited to come in either virtually or in person, to be able to give a presentation and showcase what their system capabilities are. We would check references, we would run the numbers, identify what works, what doesn't, and from there, we would decide on what we want to do. Once we identify the solution provider we want to work with, we go into our next, our third phase, which is the plan development. So we will work with that software developer, working on developing test scripts and identifying what the requirements of the system would be, and how it would, the operational impacts, and how it would fit here, and then from there, we'd go into full implementation. The goal is to begin that process now and go through June of twenty twenty-six, by the time we expect to have the entire system up and running.
The other is, the proposal is very detailed, but it keeps referring to Loudoun Utilities and doesn't refer to the City of Loudoun. So I'm assuming that you're looking at entities as separate entities, and their requirements and their needs.
Yes, and that's a very common issue. For example, Glenn and I are currently working on a project in California right now that has one system for the city needs, one system for the, for the utility needs, and then there's a backend integration. That's certainly an option, but it's not the best option. What we're looking for is a software platform, unless we see otherwise, that really fits the needs of both, both sides of the house.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, because everything in here keeps just referring to Loudoun Utilities, that the same assessment you're doing, it's also included fully on the city side, and the implementation, the K P Is being developed for both entities as separate entities, not just one that can go on.
Absolutely, yes, that's correct.
Any questions for David? And again, this will be split fifty-fifty with Loudoun Utilities and the city.
And same way in Loudoun Utilities, this is, we're paying for it out of this year's budget, and then we'll just put a line item for next year's, for anything starting July after.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Hey, we have a motion to approve, we have a second?
No, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you so much.
Get to work.
Yeah.
The clock's ticking right there.
Next is a resolution to support an amended state law designated Tennessee National as a premier-type tourist resort. This is at the request of House Representative Lowell Russell, just to make sure that City Council supports the action.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second?
No, second.
Motion is second. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next one is authorizing mowing contract for city properties for twenty-five, twenty-seven, it's a two-year contract, to Thomas Contracted LLC, in the annual amount of one eighty-nine, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. What's the pleasure of council?
I'm making a motion, we approve this.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a two-year contract with one-year extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because we were, we kept saying three-year, so it's a one for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, with an option to extend for one year.
That's correct.
Okay. And no price change over the two years, right? Can the third year be a change, that option?
No, we took that out.
So it's locked for three years, if we did?
Locked for two years, so you have that, they have that option to negotiate that third year.
That's what I was just saying, so it's locked for two years, the third year is, then becomes a caution.
Just negotiate, okay.
Correct.
All right, so motion's clear on that.
Any, any other question before we vote? Anybody? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is approving ball diamonds and concession stand used group for Loudoun Diamond Club at the Loudoun Municipal Park. We discussed this, and our Director of Facilities Maintenance, Mark Allen recommended. Have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is authorizing the professional maintenance of water slide and pool fixtures. This was at a price of thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, went through pre-bid by the Buy Board, National Purchasing Corporation, so the bid was at thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Pleasure of council.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was moving, do we need to do a roll call?
No, it's a resolution. Yeah. Next one is authorizing a two thousand and one Ford F three fifty dump truck, dump bed truck to be considered surplus.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions about the truck? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance on second reading, amended the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget, no changes have been made, we had a public hearing, no comments. Have a motion to approve, and to approve the amendment of the budget.
Make a motion?
Sorry. Have a motion, a second, all those items Melissa listed in there, if there's any specific ones you may have this question about, bring it up now, before we vote. Okay, roll call, please.
Oh, a second, I'm sorry.
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, I had, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Riddings.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, that's all the action items, just a couple of other things for, to make note of. Fuel quote comparison, February eighteenth, the low quote for precious fuel was by Valley Oil Company at the projected amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And second item is Employee Appreciation Day is Friday, March seventh. That will be at L U B operations from eleven to one. We did this last year, same time, it's National Employee Appreciation Day, so the menu will be the same as it was last year from Mr. Cardwell. So any questions about that? Next thing I wanted to bring up is some community citizens have organized a litter pickup day, and that's going to be this Saturday, March first, twelve o'clock noon, they're meeting at the old Food City parking lot where Farmer's Furniture, there is, they're meeting in that parking lot. She asked me to make that announcement, if anybody wanted to help with litter pickup, I don't know the route, don't know anything she's got planned, but she's organizing, her name's Lisa Vinton, and she's, she's got that, and she promoted it quite a bit on, on Facebook, I think. Okay. Department of Reports, let's see. All right, we'll start with you, Director Rebecca, do you have anything?
I have a question.
Okay. Director Harold?
No, sir.
Oh, wow, okay.
Go to the next one, hurry.
That's the only ones I see. I don't seem like my home.
He's not here tonight.
Director Huskins, do you have anything?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Megan, you have any?
I actually do, if you'll let go. Our council, city manager, and city recorder went through M T A S, Municipal Technical Advisory Service, and they are all certified now in the Elected Officials Academy. They spent almost a week here in the evenings, and they went through a lot of programs, learned a lot of things about resolutions and ordinances and budgets, so it's very important for them to learn these different things, and we really appreciate them making that effort and going to class. We have certificates for Councilmember Kenny Riddings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Eric Newman.
Thank you.
Councilmember John Cardwell.
Graduated twice.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Jeff Harris.
Thank you.
And our city reporter, Melissa Huskins. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Megan. Presenting those. Councilmember Reports, Councilmember Newman, you have anything to?
Nothing to report.
Nothing from recreational.
Wednesday, we do have a meeting here Wednesday at five thirty.
Okay. That's it, sorry. All right. Vice Mayor Dixon from Planning?
We did have a planning meeting, but there was nothing in it to vote on, it was all informational meeting, so there was nothing to vote on.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Cardwell?
Yes, the Loudoun Utility met today at four thirty, and following resolutions were passed. We also authorized agreement with the Spiegler Group. We authorized the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four Freight Line four-by-four all-tech bucket truck. We approved an easement and roadway purchase agreement to help for a natural gas, a natural gas pipeline expansion. We awarded a bid for a six-inch steel main gas main installation across Sweetwater Creek. We authorized an agreement for professional services with R I D engineering to do leakage testing on their water pipes. We authorized the purchase and installation of a standby generator at Carrion Lift Station, and we established natural gas rates at one forty-three, which is down from one eighty-three the month before. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee met at six o'clock on the eighteenth. We covered the status of the Certified Local Government application, which is still pending. We also talked about the walking trails that were still in the research mode, and the historians are, are researching and writing to get those signs prepared. And also, the signs for Dunbar School have come in. Once Tony Woody gets them mounted, I'll let you know, and we'll go down and do an unveiling. And that's, that's all that matters to me.
And I guess the, the grant application got submitted in time, didn't it?
Oh, yes, for, for Sarah Anderson.
Yes.
Yes, that, that grant application went in, and now we're just sort of...
Waiting.
Waiting to see.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Riddings, do you have anything to report?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, closing comments, we do have some employee anniversaries to, to celebrate. L U B Drew Russell, Gas Water and Sewer, celebrating one year. Kelly Smalllin, Customer Service, one year. Ben White, Gas Department, one year. Jason Brandon, Water Treatment Plant, he's been here six years. Joe Don Moorefield, Electric Department, nineteen years. So if you see these individuals, thank them for their, their service to L U B. City of Loudoun, Juan Espinoza, Facility and Maintenance, three years. So it's in Mark's group. Then Travis Gray, Bill James, twenty years. Again, thank you all for your, your service to the City of Loudoun. Vice Mayor Dixon, you have some birthdays, I guess.
I do. Police Department, Michael Flynn, February twenty-eighth. Fire Department, Andy Disney, February the eighth. Gary Johnson, February eleventh. Hunter Raby, February fourteenth. Electric Department, Eric Milton, February eleventh. Travis Williams, February twenty-first. The Water Department, Ed Adama, February the third. And Civil Service Board, Dickie Blankenship, February twenty-fifth. That's it, Mayor.
Okay.